All right, folks, I'd like to welcome you to our board meeting on June the 23rd. Good to see everybody, board members, you all look good. Looks like you've been out in the sun. Sandra, Sandra, you gotta look at a little more sun, you're in that drive-in too much, for goodness sakes. But it's good to see everybody, and we'll open this meeting on June the 23rd at 5:02. And just as what, in terms of a welcome and how the meeting will be run, we've chosen to use a virtual platform, page invite us, and to exercise social distancing. And so we've got a virtual meeting platform, the following rules we're using for our meetings. We're using Zoom to conduct our meetings and we'll be streaming live to YouTube, which allows for members of the public to view and/or listen to the meeting. Prior to the COVID situation, government board had a call to the public on its agendas during the regular meetings, which allowed members of the public to address them on issues within the jurisdiction of the board. We'd like to provide a method of public comment during our virtual meetings. Members of the public may submit public comments via email to comments@pageud.org. That's at comments@page.org. No later, Monday by 5:00 PM, the day before each regular meeting. And at that regular meeting, then we will read those comments. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent possible. Again, we apologize in advance for any inconveniences that this may cause, and ask for your patience as we navigate in these, as everyone is saying unprecedented times, and indeed, they are unprecedented. So we'll open up this public meeting with a roll call. And let's go ahead and get started, let's go, our norm, Sandra here at home, why don't you start the roll call off?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Sandra Kidman.
Did you hear her? Okay, I didn't, okay. Go ahead, Desiree.
Desiree Fowler, Board Clerk.
Ed Franklin, Board Member.
You're gonna have to unmute, I think, B. Unmute. Okay, B did the address, she went ahead and counted herself into the roll call. And then we've got Lynn Hoffman, Executive Secretary of the Board, and then Larry Wallen, the incoming Superintendent, joining us. And so let's go ahead and proceed with the public hearing. The first item is presentation of proposed budget expenditures for the 2020, 2021 school year by Vindi Orahandi. So Vindi, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Candelaria, Governing Board President, Governing Board Members. Today, we're gonna look at the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. So, I hope you can see my screen. So, here, up first, we're looking at the general budget limit, which is, we are proposing and estimating it to be at 17.7 million for fiscal year 21. This, there's a decrease of about 320,000 because of the loss of student count, and also, we are not able to carry forward as much as we did in fiscal year 20. As you can see, the balance, budget balance carry forward for fiscal year 20 was 1.9 million, and we're estimating to be at about a million dollars this year. And if you look at the next slide, this is the budget distribution for fiscal year 21, whereas salaries would be about at $10 million, benefits would be about 3.2 million, and so forth. Here, you'll see a reduction in supplies, and also a reduction in our other expenses, budget line items, so that's what you see here. And if we move on to our impact aid budget, we have a reduction of about 11 million, sorry, of about 340,000. This reduction is due to, again, our carry forward being less than what it was in fiscal year 20, and also, we are spending more. So we are not able to carry forward as much as we did last year. So, that's, that's why we ended up with the budget balance of 11 million dollars. All right. Now, if you look at our district additional assistance, where here, we have, we have an increase of about 649,000. That is due to the prior year limit and the carry forward of about 744,000. And also, at the state level, because of the reduction in the, sorry, decrease in the reduction of the DAW, we have, we received more funds there. And also, in this slide, you'll see the expenditure distribution and how we plan to spend these capital funds, or the district additional assistance, where have allocated about a million dollars for construction and about 200,000 for technology. And here, we move on to our classroom site fund budget. We'll see that we are anticipating to carry forward about 1.7 million dollars to fiscal year 21. And even though our allocation here is less than what we had last year, about, it's 1.2 million, this is due to the reduction in the sales tax revenues. However, our budget balance, available budget balance will be 3 million dollars. And we are still, we will, we are anticipating to spend about 7,100 dollars per teacher. If you look at our special projects, here on our federal projects, the highlight was that the CARES Act monies, we received them, it's close to 497,000. And in our state and other projects, if you, it's about 157,000 in total, the bulk of that is in our SCI grant that we received. We got the word yesterday that we'll be receiving about 90,822. So, and also, I apologize, because of this factor, we, I had to amend the, amend page six of our budget worksheets to capture the actual dollar amount we received. So, and in adjacent ways, here, we are anticipating it may be at 700,000 because if we adopt the proposed budget tax rate of 4.1, $4.12. So here, to calculate this primary tax rate, you'll see, we take into account the SS valuation for the district and also the SRP valuation of 57 million. So, how this tax rate is made up is with the equalization based tax rate of 3,006 cents and a difference in the transportation tax rate of 18 cents, and adjacent ways, if we, this is, we're estimating it to be 26 cents if we levy 500,000. So, that's all, if you have any questions for me.
Any questions, board members?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Sandra.
Um, so, the $7,000, that's what you're estimating for the adjacent way we'll spend, how much is in there right now?
About 300,000.
Okay.
And the project that we are planning with the monies was the Lakeview Bus Ramp Project. So, if we were to, the cost came out to be about 700,000 for the project when we went to bid. We could not afford it then, so we backed out. And we are proposing this, we could, we raised the tax rate from about 15 cents in comparison to last year.
Okay, can you also tell me why are, why we're $900,000 short in our rollover from like the previous year, why we have $900,000 left to rollover?
In, impact the aid fund, or?
No, you were mentioning, I'm sorry, on the first slide, I can't pull up your slide.
Let me, let me, I thought I'm still sharing, sorry. Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Oh. How about now, can you see my screen?
Yeah, it wasn't on that one.
Um.
Hold on. Is that the first slide? Okay, hold on.
Yes.
Okay, right there, where it says CDCF.
Oh, budget balance carry forward.
Yeah.
So, we carried forward 1.9 million in fiscal year 20, and our estimate today is about a million dollars because of the spending and also mainly the increases that has happened when it comes to annualizing some of the employees we hired during the year, and also, the state retirement went up, and also, the insurances went up. Those are some of the reasons, and also is why we are not able to carry forward all of that money.
So, my question is, at the current rate and our current spending, would we then have anything to carry over next year?
Yes, so we are anticipating a million dollars to carry forward.
Next year as well.
Next year, and you, so, good question. So we need, we, we have been in conversation with Mr. Wallen, we'll have to look at some cuts. Because if you look at our budget worksheets too, you'll see RFT amounts. So, we moved about 10 positions from MNO fund to impact aid, just to be at the budget capacity of 17 million. So yes, we will have to look at some cuts to help us survive and be able to sustain and carry forward for next year, fiscal year 21, into 22, if you're, if that answers your question.
So, so my, so am I correct when I state that we spent $900,000 more than
In 20, yes.
In 20, than we should have if we wanted to have the same carryover?
Yes, correct.
And what type of cuts are we talking about?
We are, say, certified staff, or it's, it's a decision the district and the board will have to make. Positions is what we saw, we had to move on to our impact aid to be able to balance the budget.
I have one more question, so how much money is in our rainy day fund right now?
So unfortunately, we don't have a rainy day fund because our impact aid spending was at 7 million dollars.
Are you saying we used up the 3 million we had? I'm a little confused here.
So, every year, till fiscal year 19, 20, we, we did have a fund reserves of about a million doll, a couple million dollars. But with the increase of spending in the impact aid fund, and also, some of the curriculum adoptions we did with our reserved monies in Fund 958, we, because of the high expenses, we have, we do not have any reserves sitting out there. But with the impact aid fund, as long as we receive our impact aid dollars of 6 million dollars every year, we will be able to survive, but the rainy day fund is no longer there, we will have to build it again with some of the cuts we will have to do.
Okay, I am super confused right now, because I, I'm sure that last year, I was told we had 3 million dollars. So where did those 4 million dollars go?
So, by end of 20, December 20, sorry, in December of 2019, our expenses in the impact aid fund with the incumbents plus the expenses we did, we were at 7 million dollars. Even though we carried forward that 2 million dollars, hoping we'll be able to secure that as reserves, it was spent because of all of the expenses that the district had went through. So, yes, we, so then, we are carrying, it's all, it's now looked at as a carry forward amount that we are carrying forward, but it's not the reserves, it will have to be used in our fiscal year 21. To start the year, we'll have to use the carry forward that we, we have in impact aid, about 3 million dollars. But it's, it's not earmarked as sitting somewhere in a pot.
Okay, I'm gonna have to talk to you about this another time, because something doesn't seem quite right, and I don't understand what, what happened.
Yes.
Okay, Vindi, one more question, I understand you, so we may be doing some cuts in the future, and I pick up on that, but aren't we also talking from, like I could see somewhere, about picking up additional staff also?
Yes, so that, that's also earmarked to be spent out of our impact aid fund, because we, we will continue to receive the 6 million dollars every year.
Okay.
So far, but then we will, with the last of student, we will, a reduction there as well.
Okay.
We, we'll also have a snapshot of our actual expenses in, when we do the annual financial report in October. But before that, if you would like to meet with me, I would share that information.
Well, I, I also have that same recollection that we, we had, we had funds available in a reserve, and I know we'd spent quite a bit, but I thought, I thought we had 2 to 3 million in addition to that. And as I understand, some of the funds that were spent were due to costs, not as a result of things we did, but it was because of additional cost of retirement funds and various things like that, is that what you were saying?
So that's part of the, when it comes to the MNO budget limit reduction, those increases played a role, yes. And also
And the amount of 4 million dollars.
Uh.
So we're short the night, we're short the 900,000, and then we had 2 or 3 million dollars in contingency, and now that is all gone, I, I'm just thoroughly confused.
I'm sorry, we can sit down and I can show you all of the details.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead and unmute yourself. D has a question. All right, hold on, hold on just one second, D.
Does mute?
No, you're good to talk.
Yeah, perfect, we can hear you.
Okay, all right. My question is, with all the activity that's been going on with COVID-19, it's going to require extra supplies, for instance, masks, hand soap, cleaning supplies, it does, in fact, looking at the proposed budget, looking under the MNO, the impact aid, I see very low money in each item to purchase those, are we okay with that, I'm just asking?
Yes, so we've applied for a reimbursable grant to DEMA. Mr. Wallen, if you can help me describe what DEMO stands for, sorry, Department of Military Affairs, I believe.
Right, it's through FEMA, it's a emergency fund from the federal government that comes through. DEMA is the state agency that manages the state's allocation. And we're in, we are in that process, you designated Vindi as the point of contact for that, and the estimate, initial estimate that we can receive in reimbursements for COVID-19 expenses is 134,000 dollars. But it's on a reimbursement basis, so we have to spend it, and then we get reimbursed for it. But any, everything that we can tie to that we are doing that, so that would come back in as revenues. The second piece is the care fund, which is gonna be approximately 500,000 dollars, about 498,000. The care fund is another 500,000 we're gonna get, that we'll be able to use, and we're in the process of submitting that grant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if that's gonna be enough or not, but that's the two resource, rate revenues sources we have right now.
Okay, anybody have any other questions? Okay, obviously, there's a couple of us that really need a little more clarification. What is the drop deadline for this approval for this budget? What's the deadline?
I wanna say by the 15, before the 15th of July.
Okay, so we, we do have time to reconsider this, once we get our information.
This is just the proposed budget, and so
Oh, that's right, that's right, yep, so we can, we can modify it at that, at that time.
Right, there'll be some time to change, and then also
My understanding is the proposed budget, though, you can only go down, you can't go up, once you publish the proposed budget.
Yes, you can go up.
Right, so you can go down.
Yes.
Okay. All right, everybody understand that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead, and if there are no further questions, we'll move on to item B, and that's public comments, we have no public comments, so we'll just move on to C, and that is adjournment. I'd need a motion and a second to adjourn her.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion, and D seconds. Okay, all in favor say aye and signify.
Aye.
Okay, good, we are adjourned. And we're gonna move on directly to the special meeting. And the special meeting will convene at 5:25. And so the, we'll start with a roll call once again, and Sandra, start us off.
Do you make carry?
Ed Franklin.
Desiree Fowler.
Okay, we're joined by Lynn Hoffman, the Executive Secretary of the Board, and also Larry Wallen. And this, we'll like, I'd like a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Unmute yourself, Miss D, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you so much, we got, we got a motion.
How fucking it.
And we have a second, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, first item is approval of proposed budget and expenditures for 2020, 2021, this is an action item. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proposed budget and expenditures for the 2020 to 2021 school year.
Yeah, we'd have a motion.
I second that motion.
And a second. All right. Any, any further comment?
Did you say that we had till the 15th to approve this?
Yeah, July 15.
Well, I feel very uncomfortable approving this at this point, because I have too many, that, that something's not right, and then that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay.
I'd like to have a little bit more information myself personally, too.
Okay, now let me, let me be sure of where we're at. Now, is it mandatory we approve the proposed budget at this point in time?
You're, you're just approving the proposed, you're not adopting the actual budget
Right.
For the 2021 school year, you won't be asked to do that until July 14th at that public hearing, so there, you have this 10 days to, to play around with it a little bit, get comment, public comments on it, et cetera.
So we can approve with no harm, no foul, except that we will not be able to add to, we can only go down, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so is everybody comfortable with that? Vindi?
Yes, sir.
All right, so it's, we have a motion and a second, and from what I hear from our board members, we'd like more information.
We do.
Yep, and so I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye. Let's do that again. All in favor say aye, you'd have to signify with your hand raised as well. Okay, so at this point, we don't have an approved budget, and so we'll move on to the second, and we'll get our clarifications. Item B, approval of cost to hire 14 teachers to work on the development of virtual learning lesson plans for opening of school. This is an action item.
Mr. President, members of the board.
Sir, we need, we need a motion and a second.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'm, I make a motion to approve the four additional custodians for 2020, 21.
Let's go on item B, the hire 14 teachers. Item B. I need a motion for hiring 14 teachers to work on the virtual learning platform.
I'll make a motion to approve the call for hiring the 14 teachers to work on the development of virtual learning.
Okay, thank you.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Wallen.
Mr. Pres, Mr. President, members of the board, we are moving toward virtual learning, as you'll see when we talk about the possible reopening scenarios. And one of the things is, we need to create virtual learning lessons. From March until May, we worked on that topic, and my understanding is that some teachers did virtual learning, but not to the degree, degree that we are looking at opening up in August. And so the idea is to take these teachers, get the best technology teachers we can, and the idea is one per grade level, and have them design five virtual lessons that we can use to, as we start to open school, and then they will also become trainer of trainers in teaching other teachers how to go virtual. Remember from May, I'm sorry, March to May, we did paper packets. That's what went out. Now, we did, as a team, talk to our teachers about everyone being on Google Classroom, and I was informed before teachers left that every teacher had set up their Google Classroom site. Well, now we need lessons, and in order to make it work effectively, we want to bring those teachers in and spend 80 hours having them develop lessons and become trainers for other people. Otherwise, our virtual learning may not be as robust as we would like.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, this is being funded out of the CARES, CARES I'm sorry, this is being funded out of the CARES, CARES money.
Okay, thank you. Unusual times, unusual circumstances that, you know, demand some of the things that we're calling for, and I will reiterate that was come out of CARES funds. Any other questions for Mr. Wallen?
Yes. Larry, for those 14 teachers that we're looking at, we're saying we're gonna need 14, excuse me, 14 of our current teachers in this program.
Yes, the idea is one per grade level. So preschool through 12, and then one other technology person possibly to be in there.
Okay.
And we may not use all 14. We're gonna go out and ask the staff to submit a letter of interest, but they've got to be very robust in their technology development, so that we can make that work within the 80 hours that we're allocating for this. And that's at $30 an hour, which is the board's off contract rate.
Okay, any other comments, board members, questions, comments?
One last question, with this virtual learning, and I know it really helps out. How would that be effective for the kids on the reservation also?
Well, this is to develop the lessons for use for all kids. We're working out scenarios for that. We were most recently informed that some of the technology companies out there are now possibly going to have hotspots and some plans like that. Right now, we're, you know, it's a continuing development day, day by day by day.
And I'll, I'll just add that we do have that as a, as a study session item to be discussed, so we'll get a little bit further in depth with it, so it's a good question, though.
Good, good question, right.
Any other, any other questions, comments? Okay, we have. I will, I will unmute and do that again. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye and signify. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Item number C, approval to add four additional custodians for the 2020, 2021 school year. This is an action item. I'll need a motion and a second.
I make a motion to add the additional custodians for 2020, 21.
Thank you, D.
I second that motion.
Thanks, Des. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Wallen?
Mr. President, members of the board, based on the increased cleaning protocols, sanitation protocols, masking, sanitizers, all that kind of stuff, our maintenance department suggests that we were going to need four additional custodians for this year in order to meet those cleaning deadlines. So for example, we're saying, and I'll talk more about that in the reopening plan, you know, restrooms need to be cleaned at least twice a day, if not three times. Hand sanitizers is every entrance. There's a whole, if you go to the continuous learning plan, there's a whole protocol of things to be done in relation to that, and we believe it's going to take more additional day custodians to do this, to be there, to sanitize, to deal with the cleaning issues. And this is, I'm sorry, this is also funded from the CARES, CARES money.
All right, folks, any, any further questions or comments for Mr. Wallen?
Larry, I know the CARES money says it's gonna fund you, and I think you said that's round, close to half a million, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and what is gonna be the cost for, for these four individuals we're gonna, we're gonna pick up? And how will we pay that salary in the future? Assuming that the CARES won't continue into the next, into the next year. And knowing that we are about to let some people go, we just heard that earlier. So how do we justify this for the long haul? Because on one hand, I'm gonna hire some, but on the other hand, I'm gonna tell some, I'm gonna let go. So, and I know it's a different part of money, but still, we have to justify that.
And it's having the right people in the right place in terms of the custodial department. That's, that's really, that's the really issue, to be able to prepare and provide the, the safety for our students. That's what we're gonna have to do. And I agree with you, it's, it's that way. But it's coming out, and you know, we're, unfortunately, and it's only for one year. It's coming out of CARES money for this year. We don't know if we're gonna get additional CARES money in the future, but that's, you know, that's, that's where I need the, the staff to make the building safe for kids. Good question, thank you.
And I will say, same concern that I think we all have, Ed, because these are unusual times, and if things continue to move in the direction, we can only anticipate just getting tighter and tighter with budget and where money's coming from. However, if we have, you know, have to continue to just be in these kind of situations, I would, I would hope the state could step up, but they're in just bad shape as anybody else, and they're gonna be looking for money. So it's, it's important for us to keep these things in, in that same kind of mind frame. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, we do have a, a motion and a second on this item to approve four additional custodians. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye and indicate. Oh, I'm sorry. Someone have something? Okay, I think that was an aye. I'm sorry. Aye, I think it passes. Okay. All right, we're gonna adjourn our spe- special meeting. And we'll move on to our work-study session at 5:38. And once again, we'll start with a roll call, starting with Mrs. Kidman.
Demi Carey.
Thank you, D.
Ed Franklin.
Des Rae Fowler, board clerk.
And Bob Candelario, board president, joined by Lynn Hoffman, executive assistant to the board, and Larry Wallen. Thank you all, and we're gonna proceed right to our work-study session. Item number A. A continuous learning plan, reopening of schools. Larry Wallen and team leaders, man, you guys have been doing a lot of work. Excited to hear about what you have in store for us.
Well, we have completed a continuous learning plan. It's about 94 pages. That keeps changing daily. This afternoon at 3 o'clock, I received directions from the county school superintendent telling me that the Navo Nation has now issued their opening for school, and so there'll be more changes coming. The good part is, the Navo Nation side of it, it's a lot of questions, and it's all lined up with the continuous learning plan. But basically, I want to, let me see if I can share. Okay, can you see? You can't see it. I can't open it. I lost it completely. Hold on. On your table in front of you is the document that I'm looking at.
Yep, we've got, we do have that.
Yeah, and so what it is, is, is I'm trying to do this, and Brian might, might want over, walk over and help me.
This is, Ms. Kidman has something, yes.
Okay, we have two attachments in board talk. Am I looking at the continuous learning plan or the reentry model?
Reentry model. So the reentry mo-
Hold on a second, sorry about that. We, we need to be looking at the continuous learning plan?
Yes, right here, everybody.
That's because of Zoom.
Right, it's, is this, this piece of paper everybody has?
Oh, you have to go like this.
Piece of paper you're referring to, is that the continuous learning plan or the reentry model?
Oh, there you go, right there. Okay, we found it. There we go. Now you're seeing it.
Oh, you're, we're looking at a reentry model?
Yes, that was the first item on the agenda. Oh, yeah, continuous learning plan, reopening of schools. We, rather than go through all the details in that continuous learning plan, I focused on the last chapter, which was about how we're gonna reopen school.
Okay.
And our, you know, our schools are, where our mission statement says that we're passionate about the learning for all mission and understanding that every student matters, we're responsible and accountable for the education of every student that walks into our classroom. In this case, it's going to be walking into our classroom, walking into our buildings, and connecting virtually online. This plan is based on that safety is our first priority. And we are defining right down to today, still continuing to define safety protocols. We met Monday as an example, and basically determined it's in our best interest for teachers to wear face shields instead of mask. And so we're proceeding to move forward in that direction. Schools are main closed this spring and summer, and so we're gonna open in the fall with the potential closure triggered by new outbreak. So always remember, we're watching those numbers to see what will happen and who may or may not be closing things. Reopen the schools, we'll have modifications based on guidance from all those different people, the national, the state, the local health officials, including physical distancing, face coverings, temperature screenings, and frequent disinfectant of classrooms. And that's where those four custodians come in, is the frequent disinfecting of classrooms, restrooms, common areas, and so on and so forth. Accommodations will be implemented for teachers, administrators, school staff, and students who may have a heightened risk due to age or other health conditions. So we'll be working with our special education department to make sure every student is in a safe position. All students will be engaging in one of the following options. So these are large options, and they're based on the safety trigger, depending on where we are in terms of the outbreak. Quite frankly, if we were to open today, we wouldn't open today. There's been a, an increase in COVID-19. Are you also noticing that large municipalities, and I'm not sure where pages in that yet, I think they're considering it Wednesday, are now mandating mask and open public? That is a requirement. I know in Flagstaff, it went into effect Monday morning at 8 o'clock. So again, things are changing quickly in relation to that. So this plan is written that we're going to systemically implement a quality education for all students. We believe that all learners are challenged, and that's learners and students, teachers and parents, and that's where I was talking about the teachers, because we don't have, I've not observed a high level of experience with developing virtual lessons. That's now the requirement. When you look at all the plans that are available from Kyrene Elementary, Tempe Union, Mesa, you'll see virtual learning is one of the options. And it's about that, aiming, supporting that aim higher, work harder, and realize the satisfaction of academic achievement. And the models, the models that you're gonna see, I'm gonna talk about, are fine tuned daily with new information. So we have basically three options, the yellow, the green, and the, the other green. And first is, on August the 4th, we open school in person. Everybody reports to school for five days a week. Oops. Hang on just a second. Where do my? There we go. I lost my Zoom button. There we go. Can you still see that? Okay, so this, this yellow will be the brick and mortar, the boots on the ground scenario, that everybody comes to school, all 2,600 students will be five days a week. Physical distancing will be expected, however, we're gonna add enhanced cleaning and safety protocols, the need for the four additional custodians, and face covering are gonna be required of all students and staff. The only way to get around the physical distancing is to do that. So when you're looking, thinking about physical distancing, to have a six-foot perimeter around a person requires about 193 square feet. When you take that, a classroom is about 950 square feet. That lets you have eight kids per classroom. We don't have the staff to be able to handle something like that. So that's where the face coverings will be required. Everybody will be required. Teachers will have masks, aides will have masks, staff will have masks, students will have the face coverings. And so that enhanced cleaning and safety protocol will go into place while everyone's in the buildings, and then deep cleaning in the evening. Elementary classrooms will stay together at recess. Will, materials will not be shared. So, you know, we're not gonna let you give a pencil to someone else. All students will have a district provided Chromebook. We're gonna issue Chromebooks. That's the positive. However, think about this. Every kid's got a Chromebook. And if you have your own laptops in front of you, what happens to those laptops? You sneeze on them. You spill something on them. You wipe your nose on them. So we're gonna have to have enhanced protocols for cleaning the Chromebooks that we're issuing kids, and we talked about that Monday, because those are gonna be germ collectors. And so we're gonna have to have kids clean those after every use. We're gonna have to have wipes and stuff for that to happen, and the iPads. Electives and specials will observe physical distancing and safety protocols. We'll have extracurricular activities, high school athletics. We'll have social and emotional support to promote student, staff, and family wellness. And so that will be a normal opening on August the 4th. Everybody comes to school. Now, what happens if we have changes in the, the infection rate? So what could happen, a potential now all of a sudden, physical distancing may become a big requirement. If that happens, in order to create that model, we would have to go to a fifth, an A and B schedule, where 50% of the students are in school, 50% of the students are on virtual from home. That'd be five days a week. When on campus, students would, would deal with all in-person learning experiences. All students will again have the Chromebook and the iPad. Electives and specials will observe physical distancing, may participate in extracurricular activities, social, emotional. So that's a hybrid piece of that, everybody on the brick and mortar. But we now have increased, we've decided we need to increase physical distancing because of possibilities. I have to say and warn everybody that this also means then there must have been increases in contact with the COVID-19, so this may not be a very strong solution, because if we have increased, we're gonna go to remote learning. We're gonna close the buildings. And the critical piece is, we're gonna close the buildings, but learning is gonna continue to take place. Hence, those 14 teachers beginning to provide virtual lessons. So learning will continue virtually, pre-K through 12, so potentially an example, and we'll have it more better, we'll have it more better, sorry. We'll have it better defined as we move along, but virtual classes are usually running about 8 to 11, and then teacher office hours, and teachers are available remotely to work with students. Again, all students have their Chromebooks and iPad. All classes will be led by teachers. We hope it will be a high client, we're, we're planning a high-quality online learning curriculum. That's why we're again doing the practice. We'll be, we'll have preventive safety measures going on in the buildings during this time, preventive deep cleaning protocols, social, emotional help, special ed team working. So this remote learning could be a 14-day cycle. It could be a 18-day cycle. It would depend on how things go. But if, instead of closing, saying no learning's gonna take place, we're gonna close the buildings, and we're gonna focus on virtual learning, and the platform for that is, is Google Classroom. Those are the three possibilities right now. There may be more. I have a meeting Thursday with the other county school superintendents. Everybody's looking at different ways to do this. This particular, these particular scenarios are informed by, by rating the Mesa Unified reopening plan, the Kyrene Unified real, or Elementary reopening plan, and other school districts that have shared their opening, reopening and reopening plans. Everyone is continuing to look at the beginning of July as a drop dead date to try to make a decision. If, if given what I know right now, we would start with brick and mortar on August the 4th. But I can't predict what that's gonna look like in July, other than to say, there has been an increase in COVID activity in Arizona. Those three. Now, for someone who says, wait a minute, I'm gonna homeschool my kid. Well, yep, and if you homeschool your kid, you're gonna be virtually homeschooling that kid. And so think about that. Think about from May or March to May, how was that as you worked with your student? How was that as you worked with your student, your son or daughter in that home virtual learning? So we are applying for a, what's called an AOI Academy, Arizona Online Academy. We've got to give it a name and everybody who participates in that academy will need an internet connection. We will provide Chromebooks. There will be live teacher-led instruction and virtual learning. And K kindergarten through grade twelve, class meetings, page teachers and virtual curriculum. Social emotional support, specials, accommodations, electives, accommodations, recess, breaks. This application is due July first and we're preparing to submit this. So this is, this application is totally different than the, the yellow and the green. Okay, this is a separate school. So we will have one additional school in Page Unified School District that will be that Learning Academy. My understanding is several years ago that the district was involved with Scottsdale Online Learning. I've actually seen a document. I discovered a document about that Monday. Myself, I'm familiar with Mesa Unified School District learning, online learning. And what we did there is when we were involved that we're bringing in. I did, I didn't have a physics teacher, so I subscribed to physics classes from Mesa Distance Learning. The cost was a hundred and seventy dollars per course. I still kept all the ADM. I paid Mesa that hundred and seventy dollars for the courses. And we're also looking at the drivers will be a co-program called Edge Annuity, which we have at the Manson Mesa, we've been using it. We also have it using it at the high school. That's six through twelve. Then K five is called Odysseyware, which is also Edge Annuity as, as we evolve the online learning academy. So if I want to keep my child home because I'm concerned about the process and procedures, then I can enroll in the online academy. Well, I do that. I enroll in the online academy. Three weeks into school, everything is going great at the brick and mortar location. My son or daughter is driving me crazy because they want to go to the brick and mortar. Then what happens is you would transfer, just like transferring to another school district. The student could transfer from the AOI Academy to the brick and mortar. So it's not, it's, it's a choice that's there for parents and we want to drive it with page teachers and our BT curriculum framework and those kinds of things. So that, that's what the, the options look like. We'd like to bring this back to the board with hopefully a stronger recommendation in July as we get closer to see which way we're going to go. Then there's some other pieces in there, but the one thing I want to show you is this is what a solution to not having distance learning could look like. These are Taiwanese children having lunch. So if we were to serve as an example lunch in the classroom, you train the kids to take off their masks only when they're within the dividers. I put this out there because this is a possibility to deal with distance. Not being able to do the distance, we could do dividers like this for kids. So those are some of the pieces to this. But again, to reiterate, August fourth, brick and mortar, provided everything is going according to plan in terms of, and we have triggers set up based on the county infection rate and that kind of stuff and who's doing what and where we are. Then the hybrid, if we have to, and then the remote learning, if we have to close buildings, we will do that remotely. Parents in some cases are going to have to step up because we know that there are blind spots in our outline communities and we're going to have to work through that. We do have some buses that have hotspots. One school district that I've talked to is actually purchasing hotspots and you put them in a car and you go out to a location and everybody meets you at that location. The idea would be that the Navo Nation has opened up, the chapters have opened up because the chapters all have wifi access. But again, it's, 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 you know, hit or there. There is the concept of doing strictly remote is gaining momentum throughout the state, although many, many districts have not committed to that yet, where we still remain that closure till September. I spoke with an Arizona representative of the legislature, and that's one of the things that she said the Democrats were talking about was possibly closing all of the first, first semester and what that would look like. And there's various stories around the state. So brick and mortar, everybody's on board August fourth. Hybrid, if we have to, if we have to try to expand the distance learning. Remote, if we have cases and we have to close buildings. And then the AOI Academy is the option there for those who don't want to participate in the other three. That's as simple and clear as I can make that ninety-four page document. That document contains a lot of protocols. I have more protocols from the trust I'm writing up as we speak related to the, the quality of, of enhanced cleaning and safety protocols on buses and so on. Just for your information, bus drivers cannot wear face shields. They have to wear masks because Department of Public Safety has determined that is a great distractor. And then we're establishing protocols for getting on the bus. We're asking parents to bring their kids to the bus, stay at the bus stop until the kids are loaded. Load the kids in family groups, set them on the bus, but everybody has to wear a mask. As soon as they start on the bus, they do hand sanitizing, get on the bus and so on. And then the same thing around the buildings. Having so many access points at the building levels, those are all operational issues that are currently being put in, developed and put in place because again, we want to make sure we are being safe for parents. Questions, please give me lots of questions.
Hello Larry, I'll start off with one with math. We're going to provide math on each and every bus when the kids are coming on board. They'll have those available, I would assume.
That is the plan, although we're asking the parents to provide masks as well. But we're not going to let a kid on the bus who does not have a mask. So if they don't have one, we're going to have one to give them. I know the last, I know it's not enough. The last order I saw was around six thousand masks that we are, we're ordering right now, not including the, the face shields.
I know also we did a survey, I believe, to get feedback from the parents about, you know, what type of options for their kids coming back to school. So when I look at option two already, and I know there'll be some cases where parents got to step up, but how do we feel like for that gap for those parents that can't step up, that working full-time job and they, and they got to have that income. So how do we feel, have to fill that gap?
Well, one of the things on my, and I talked to Mr. Kendall Larry about that's on my planning board is try to open a daycare. That's more complicated than than just saying tomorrow, we're going to have a daycare. I've got to get, get things in place to do that. But that's a possibility. We have the space. The issue is that the right space does have the right sinks in it, right desk, those kinds of things. And I haven't gotten to that point yet, but that's one of the possibilities.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to hear. Nice having the space. And I know all the extra state requirements and insurance and this could be quite costly. So where would the funds come from that?
That is a very good question. And I can't, I don't have an answer to that right now. You saw our budget proposals. So that's, that's where it is. Obviously the daycare would have to be self-sufficient funding itself, but you still got to have startup money to make a go of it.
Correct.
And we will, I'm sorry, we will obviously try to seek grants or other kinds of funding for that.
And if we did go to like a phase two of, of three, how about the kids lunches? Will we still continue to what we've been doing the summer, for the summer also?
If we do the remote learning, yes, we would set up again those delivery points and serve the lunches that way. And that's also, you know, for the brick and mortar is a big challenge because you know, we're talking about serving, well, I'm pretty sure the lunches are going to be individually served, individually wrapped. But that then creates a whole new scenario that we have to put in place to, to deal with that as well.
Exactly. And my last question for you of sports, I would assume with all this going on, we wouldn't be doing any sports also, correct?
Not if we did remote learning, we closed the buildings, there would be no sports. A couple of school districts already have canceled their sports programs near us. And so we're, we're, we're planning on continuing, opening our sports program unless we have, you know, receive orders from any of the agencies that govern that, or we have, you know, some, some contact.
Even with brick and mortar, I'll be a little bit concerned. Have we, will we check with the CDC or what infectious control preventative because if you tell my activities out there, it's no way with the spread and the sweat that if one kid has it, the other wouldn't get infected. I just can't see the happen math. I'm trying to breathe through those while practicing. That's, that's kind of dangerous to me.
Well, and according to the AI guidelines, if you're in that kind of a sport, the physical distancing is this, is the expectation. So you would need to wear a mask. But you know, as well as I do, it's, it's a
Oh, a kid, yeah.
Yeah, it's a chance. We do have a whole sports program documents, you know, books set up and everything with the latest AI and CDC guidelines. They're saying social distancing, small groups, potentially no greater than ten in a squad, so to speak. And, and moving forward like that. So that's what we're advising and, and working and training coaches on. If we have a program at all, we could be calling, we could be recommending to you in August that we don't have a program. But right now we're moving forward as if the brick and mortar scenario is the one we're going to and August fourth is our opening date. So we need to get our teams ready.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, my question there is what would the schedule look like?
For sports, for like football as an example?
You have schedules for all three, but I don't see schedule here.
Oh, you mean a bell schedule kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay, that's in the, that's in the full document. And so it's the same schedule that, that they have right now. But if you go to, there's a page in the document where there's schedules, I believe it's chapter four, where we have the, the bell schedules arranged. Now, one of the considerations is to, as I'm talking, I'm looking for that page where we have the schedules, is to move the high school to a seven period day so that it's, it's easier for us to do that distancing and stuff instead of the AB schedule. And that has positives as negatives to it, but it might be in the best interest of kids to move in that direction. So we've run some samples on page eighty eighty-six and eighty-seven, when you go into the full document, you'll see a high school daily schedule of AB, you'll see a middle school, and we also have a high school seven period day schedule that we're evaluating in relation to that. And there's pro and cons for each one. But all of them are going to be driven by movement and distancing and those kinds of things and what's safe for kids. So page eighty-six and eighty-seven are sample schedules and options. And then that, and also in that hybrid model, one of the options we have on eighty-six, eighty-seven is we have a Monday. A Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. So Monday, Wednesday is virtual, Tuesday, Thursday is face to face. Friday is all virtual and, and, and continue deep cleaning. So there's a variety of ways we can move once we know what that movement is going to look like. The thing I can tell you for sure, right now, again today, tomorrow it may change, but right now face covering masking will be required of all students and staff.
Starting in what grade?
That's under consideration. There is some of the, the districts that I'm talking about are starting masking at sixth grade to twelfth. They're saying that kindergarten, preschool, kindergarten to fifth. It's not, they're not as at risk in relation to that. And that, you know, one of the things is temperature checks. They're telling us potentially that temperature checks at that age may not be the way to identify a student who may have, be a carrier. It's going to be a rash, diarrhea. Those kinds of things that will be the telltale spot. So that's going to be individual questions that will have to be asked if, if that pans out. We just learned about that last week and so we haven't developed that protocol yet. But potentially K five would not be masked, six twelve would be masked. And again, it could be K, K two and then three twelve mask. Depending on what the best, best information is before we open. And the, the critical piece about this is it's about three weeks away. So it's about what fifteen, twenty days that we've got to move forward and, and opening school or not. I wish I could give you a real clear definitive, this is the way it is, but like I said, it changes daily.
Yes, go.
So I would like for Mr. Wallen to sound a little more on the the academy. How? What kind of? Sorry. So it says emotional, social emotional support. What about IEPs and things like that?
What about IEPs?
Yeah.
That's accommodations and support virtually on there. That's where the special education teams will work directly with the family to schedule that required in-person or telephonic therapies or to schedule that support for the student who's involved in that, that program. The, in the Edge Annuity and the Odysseyware, there's courses that are designed for kids who have learning disabilities or those other kinds of characteristics that would be in there. So that
I'm sorry. So for example, like our speech therapist would still be doing speech therapist, speech therapy with their kids just virtually.
Correct, virtually. And I, I don't know if Paige has used that before, but I've had a virtual speech therapist before. I've worked with them.
How, how would we? What's the best word? Advertise the academy to our parents who are already, I'm just talking from my own
Sure.
circle. I know there's a lot of parents who are already signing up for this for online tools that have nothing to do with page. So how would we advertise this quickly enough that people know that we have that option so that we can capture those kids before they go to whatever other platforms, whatever other schools that are out there.
I don't know if we can beat that, but we will try. The application is due July one. It's the, the unofficial
For, for the
For the
To sign up?
No, for the AOI Academy.
Okay.
For the state to approve us to be an AOI Academy.
Okay. So that's July first?
That's July first, and I don't know what the turnaround is. Rio Salado College has been selected by the Department of Education to be the approver. We are told unofficially that all applications will be approved unless they're just, you know, really terrible for the, for your one year. And so we're moving in that direction. And I would, you know, I, I'm just hypothesizing right now, but once we submit that application, we'll start drawing up the, the enrollment papers. Because it has to be similar to the, you know, we need the same information residency and all that kind of stuff would be the same, same pieces and start marketing it pending approval. Not, I'm sorry, I don't have, that's the best I can do at this point.
No, no.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Yeah, it does.
Larry, I have a question for you. You mentioned bus. One of the things that I wanted to ask you is upon aborting the school buses with students, are we doing temperature checks there or are we waiting till students come to the site?
We are looking at, and I just got more information on that. This right here, which is in page eighty-eight in the, the continuous learning plan. Social distancing on a school bus is, is very challenging as we said. Masks will be required of all students riding a school bus. All bus drivers will require to wear a mask where possible. Will load the bus back to front and unload front to back, require siblings to sit together, which that could be a challenge just by itself. But all buses will have clearly visible signage, all bus drivers, and we're probably going to be coming back and asking for monitors. Will be required to wear a mask. And then we will need, you know, the windows will be open and hand sanitizers and that kind of stuff. At the bus stops, we will communicate as much as we can that parents need to stay at the bus stop until the bus picks up the kids and maintain that social distance. that parents need to stay at the bus stop until the bus picks up the kids and maintain that social distancing. And let the kids board in a group, a family group. Is, if possible, we want the students to wait in the bus at the bus stop and then we will have masks available if they don't have their own mask. So this is the preliminary plans. I have more detailed plans I received yesterday. So I'm going back and now revising. Revising this piece. So this is a summary out of the continuous learning plan.
Got it. And secondly, if we do decide to go with the remote learning meals, is that going to also be the responsibility of the school to deliver meals out to families under reservation?
We will have to do that, yes. There'll be a meal distribution for all students in some shape or form. Now, right now, remember what's happened in the past has been because of the, the, what's it called? The school nutrition program revising the criteria and everything. We haven't seen anything yet that says if you have to go to remote learning as an example, that they're going to change how they fund and, and work with meals. So we'll have to be able to deal with that when that guidance comes out.
Okay, secondly, A O L or A O I academy, is that also? I've done online schooling with my children, so I have an understanding and an insight of how this works. But more importantly, are meals also going to be provided with that or are parents responsible for their own meals?
In that case, parents will be responsible for their own meals.
Right. And I think that is all the questions I have at the moment. Thank you.
Very good questions. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? And I'll just say Frank, Mr. Franklin addressed survey that was put out. And I know that one of the survey results was that twenty-five percent of the respondents suggested that they may not consider, they may not consider bringing their kids back in to brick and mortar. So if we went like that, the A O I will be a really, really good option. And what Ms. Kidman suggested is that as soon as we can get that out to the public.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
I just like that. Did you have six teams working on this? Or there are six teams working on this?
Yes, and about thirty-eight staff.
And I'll tell you that I know the, I've seen the documents and when you read it, there's a lot more questions you guys have to deal with and really appreciate all the efforts from everybody. Because we, there's just so many things we don't know, but it'll get clearer and clearer before we hit August four.
Hey Larry, just one last question for you. The A O I academy. Is there any money for those kids that would go, that would go to the family, vice to the, to the school system still? I know a whole lot of academies, those dollars are, once they apply for the academies, go to that family. Do we lose anything from the school with the A O I?
No, we do not. That's why we do, that's why we're doing this to recover the A D M, the A D M. The issue and the challenge is the A D M is captured differently than it is like in the brick and mortar where you have a kid in a seat. And that, that kid is counted absent. In the A O I academy, it's about screen time. And what I'm told is in theory, ideally, in the perfect world, you should be able to capture ninety-five percent of the A D M. That's, you know, the, what is it, forty-five hundred dollars per kid that we would receive. However, that is then adjusted down based on screen time. And screen time in front of the computer, but that student could also be sitting back on the couch and reading. And how do you capture that time? So it's how you capture that time that makes the difference. What I'm told in my initial research is that those online academies you've heard about, they recover about fifty to sixty percent of the A D M of that forty-five hundred dollars. And they can survive and do what they do because they don't have employee costs the way we do with insurance and facilities and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, that's, that's a a very good question, but our intent is to recover as much of the A O, the A D M as we can. And that money goes to the school district, goes into our budget calculations.
Thank you, Larry.
I have one more question.
Yeah, go.
Okay, thank you. So while you were talking, a thought popped into my head and that is that, so a lot of homeschoolers, they, they do math and English and whatever at home, but often they choose to send their kids to our M E P program. Like what's the Stravina, or also our science classes. So how would that work for those students that are signed up with our academy? Would they be able to do that as well? Like homeschoolers do or?
I don't, I, that's, that will be something I have to research. Just the, the issue to me is they would be eligible, I believe homeschoolers are eligible for extracurricular activities, but they're not eligible for classes. I could be wrong and it could be this.
Well, what I am, the, the way I understand it usually happens is they then pay the fees to the district office for that class.
That's a possibility.
So for example, you know, you participate in orchestra and science and you're billed X amount of money. You know, by the school district, then it is a possibility to pay for that because there are some classes that you just simply cannot do online, like orchestra.
Sure.
You can't do orchestra online. Culinary art is another good example. I mean, I guess it could be, you know, the jump up, but that they can't. The online experience is just not the same as it would be and actually participating in that classroom.
Yeah.
I, I, I've known some homeschoolers and that's what they usually do. They send their kids to those two or three classes that they just cannot do themselves.
And that's a possibility. We'll definitely look into it. Absolutely. I wouldn't want to deny any kid like those kinds of things. So we'd have to attach some way of, of creating a revenue stream related to that. Good question. Thank you.
All right. Any further conversation, discussion, comments? Well, this has been really helpful for sure. And again, I'll just reiterate, thanks to the teams that are doing all the hard work on this and a lot of teachers are listening in and saying, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? You're going to have to be patient and work with those that are with you in your building that are on these things to try to get the information that they've got. But as you can see, this, this, this stuff goes day to day. And there's still a lot of things we've got to work on to be ready. So again, thank you, Mr. Wallen, and thank you all those that are participating and putting this thing together. All right, let's go to the next agenda item and that's item B, entry plan. Larry Wallen.
Oh, sorry. Hold on just a minute till I pull that one up. Okay. Oh, I was, I need to find my share screen. There we go. Okay. Okay, can you see that? It'll say entry plan and initial discovery?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this was part, this was put together reasons of, thank you for being selected superintendent and Paige Unified. And if you recall during the interview, one of the things I talked about is an entry plan and doing an, an initial discovery to see where it is and where we need to go. And so that's what this is. I'm going to go through very broadly. If we'd like to do more work sessions on this, we need to, and we also need to do some, some more sessions on it, period. But basically it's about change. It's about improving. It's about growing and adapting to where we are in relation to that. So if you have the electronic version, you have a table of contents. You just click on that and it'll take you to that piece. And this whole idea providing Arizona's greatest education is what we want to build and continue to move forward on. That's in our district mission statement. And I also put in the the mission that Paige Unified School District is to provide each student with a challenging academic education and a caring and learning environment. And our motto, and that's one we need to say more frequently is we are collectively committed to every student, every day, every minute. And that should be driving our, our belief and where we're headed. And so the belief statements, and this is driven by governing board policy because governing board policy should be the stabilizer in the district as things change. You know, God forbid, superintendents come and go, but the stabilizer is that the board has established policies that should endure across time. And one of them is that the board is employing a competent superintendent to work with the board and turn that together. Parents, community, students. So the board believes that education should develop habits, attitudes, understandings and skills. And that's what should drive everything that we do. And so we put that together. I went back and took those pieces and said, okay, how is the board collectively moving forward and making that happen? And so I put together in the discovery phase, because I think it's a super idea that Paige Unified School District Governing Board has of work-study sessions and business sessions. And I went back and outlined the, the work-study sessions across the year. And what I'm looking for is themes and trends. And knowing that in my interview with the board and my coming on board, the direction was improve student achievement, make a difference. And so I'm looking for what kind of things we have in here. And this is chronologically in reverse order. But in January, the board talked about improving student achievement and they actually created a document. But this is basically where I couldn't find any references that he went further. Was this adopted? Was this turned into policy? Where did it go in direction? And so that's one of the things we want to work on as we move forward and work on those board goals. And so that gives you an idea of some of the things that the board is talking about. So then I did a, as I explained, an entry. Well, going back first, I'm sorry, to the, to the accountability ratings, getting that history. So this is what we want to change. This piece here. And that's based on a solid curriculum. And so we are striving toward that B rating for the twenty twenty-one school year and an A rated for twenty-one, twenty-two. I, I kind of find it awkward to say, we want to be a B school. No, we really want to be an A school. We want to act like an A school. We want to feel what it's like to walk around knowing that we're doing the best we can and moving forward. Well, that all goes down to closing the gap and I'll show you where that gap is. But the driving focus is around a guaranteed and viable curriculum for each student. Guaranteed and viable curriculum. Guaranteed means that is a written curriculum. It's standards based. Viable curriculum means that it is calendared. It's, we know when it's going to be taught. So you have that relationship between the written curriculum, the talk curriculum, and the part that we need to pay very close attention to is the assessed curriculum. And that, that's the three parts that make up the quality control model for how we're looking at curriculum and moving forward. And so with that, I went back and looked at the achievement ratings over the past four years. And right here is what we want to close. We want to deal with this gap. So here's where the state is in terms of mastery of state standards. Here's where we are in terms of mastery standards. You want to look at that trajectory, but most importantly, this is the gap we want to close. So for example, if you look at this, you see that in page twenty, twenty-four percent of the students in third grade mastered their English Language Arts objectives. In the state, it was about forty, forty-seven percent. So subtract twenty-three from forty-seven, which means we get, we need to get another twenty percent of the students to master the standards. Well, given, let's say we have two hundred kids per grade level, what's twenty percent of two hundred? Forty. We need another forty kids to move us up. Another forty of the two hundred. So that's not such a huge, huge bite when you begin to look at it that way in closing this gap. In third grade math, you see the same, same trend. And I'm just going to run through this quickly because this is the issue is closing the gap. It appears that seventeen, eighteen was a, a good year in relation to some achievement. There, you can see a little bit of difference. So that's what we want to look at. Fourth grade math, fifth grade English Language Arts, fifth grade math, sixth grade English Language Arts, sixth grade math. Again, you're not seeing that gap close and that's what we're focused on. And that's why we're, when I went into the, the Paige Unified District strategic plan, first thing it says is we want to become a B school. And to do that B school, we're going to use what's called beyond textbooks. And we'll talk more about that beyond textbooks in the, the next presentation. But basically, beyond textbooks is a guaranteed viable curriculum that consists of the what? Students are going to learn and when they're going to learn it. The how is still up to us to do the how and bring the resources to bear to teach those standards and test those standards. So you're seeing, this is how it went. Eighth grade algebra. The gap looked like it might close eventually. Ninth grade English Language Arts. So that's the whole point of the, the, the improvement plan is to close this gap. And again, you're looking at an increase on the average of about twenty to twenty-five percent of that grade level that would master the standards. So as I did interviews, looked at artifacts, looked at communication patterns, it became clear to me that the district, governing board and district appear to function in silos. And so you see four silos there. And you see the people sitting in the silos will pretend those are principals. But what I want you to look at is where are they looking? Sitting at those desks, which way are they looking? They're not looking together. They're not looking at a solid team, a collaborative professional learning community. And you see different discrepancies in the curriculum documents and the assessment procedures and stuff that support that. So we want to bring that all into one. So this kind of behavior, this kind of philosophy then brings us to this. This is an organization that's going in all kinds of directions. And we have a lot of really good things going on. The problem is sometimes they're competing against each other. They're not working in the same direction. So the goal is putting these pieces together, fitting this puzzle together and having people work together to give us a strong organization, a strong strategic plan. And this is what our outcomes will look like. We'll be focused in a direction and four is about what I have in my first year as, as critical targets among all the other things going on, but that we are focused budgetarily. We're focused strategically and we're focused by policy, all moving in that same direction. So in the strategic planning, this is, this is putting us into that B district. The purpose of having a school system and the critical word is school system. The purpose of having a school system is to obtain the educational and economic benefits of a coordinated and focused program for students, both to enhance learning outcomes which are complex and multi-year and employ economies of scale. And so you just, you know, entertain the budget dialogue. This needs to be a part of that dialogue. Are we doing things where we could look forward? So from those, all the artifacts that I put together, and I'll show you some more in just a minute, I basically put together four goals for myself. And that's bringing in beyond textbooks as a curricular framework with non-negotiables using key performance indicators to track implementation. And key performance indicators are short-term standards that we say, for example, we're going to measure, one of the pieces of beyond textbooks is standards are written on the board in student-friendly language. You should be able to go in the classroom, ask the students what they're studying and they should be able to tell you. So we're going to check that as a non-negotiable. So when we meet as a leadership team, what percentage of your classrooms you visit this week? And I'm asking principals to visit four classrooms per day, which is huge, but I'm. But I'm asking that we need to commit that kind of time to these performance indicators and make sure that we're meeting those non-negotiables. And then report on that in a, in the leadership team meeting. Avid, the advancement via individual determination, bringing on Abbott with non-negotiables. These are still to be developed here. Project Elevate is the state's response to our letter grades. And so we would continue to establish our non-negotiables related to Project Elevate. And then the, the, the D is to look at a qualified evaluator academy. Using the board adopted Danielson framework in the frontline app and put that together. And train locally. I've actually scheduled four days in July in which we are going to be involved in a qualified evaluator academy onsite, working with our materials, with our information, our records. And so on. And then in order to do all that, we need a meeting schedule. So I put together a meeting schedule that'll be a part of the LEA and Integrated Action Plan and the School Integrated Action Plan. And remember those, those plans have strategy. Strategy, actions, tasks. And it comes down to, and then the key performance indicators. And these are the six principles. So when I go to the the board adopted strategic plan, we need to go back and, and line this up so that we're all on the same page. So the strategic plan should be built around these six principles of, of school improvement in Arizona. And then begin to look at review summit of assessment results and school report cards. And begin to use that data to drive decisions. Develop a renewed district plan. This is very aggressive. Put together, so hopefully you'll have some mercy if I miss something. But revising that district plan so that by potentially September twenty twenty. We've got a process in place where we can also go out and get stakeholder commitment. Where we do community hearings, focus groups, all those kinds of things, put that together. Revise the governance handbook that the board has, review that with the board. You've done a great job putting that together. So now let's enhance it and let's move it forward. Then renew the district strategic plan. So how did I arrive at all those, those priorities? I, I went to what I call first days of listening. Who did I talk to? What did I hear? What did, did I not hear? And basically it was a draft plan with interview questions. And it had interview key question, key individuals in the district, conduct psych visits to see and inquire about work on the ground. And present the findings to you. So in that process, I interviewed five board members. Their, their interview had eleven questions, principals, assistant principals. District coordinators, directors and coordinators and questions. And I did not summarize those as I'm going to show you. I did with the first two and then the P A president. So when I collected that data from the governing board, the first question I asked was please give me a biographical sketch and thank all of you for sharing. We got a rich history behind every board member, tremendous. Why did you seek election? Got board that's committed to kids. Give your, give me your assessment of the district's educational program. So I summarized those five interviews together, put them together through those questions. And then I did a frequency word cloud representing the frequency specific, specific words across the interviews. And so the larger the word, the more frequency it occurred in the conversations. So board occurred, Navo, students need, those kinds of things. But there's also a huge amount of stuff in there. So again, the opportunity is to move forward this year and focus that and target that towards specific things. That the board wants to see happen, driven by your policies. So I also pulled out question six. What do you see as the two or three most important systems that need to be addressed by the board and staff? And we weren't, weren't clear. We know there's a preschool out there. Provide fighting or drugs. So it was a lot of different issues. Kaibato was the preschool one and looking at accountability. So this just gives you an idea again, when we are on target. And moving in the same direction, this will solidify it down to just a very clear direction. What are your expectations of me as a superintendent? Well, the, to report to the board, to be a, 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 a CEO for the board. And put that together. Then I did the same thing with principals and assistant principals. I went through and summarized all the things that are happening with that. And put that together into a word cloud. And so what are the accomplishments you look upon with pride as a principal? Well, PBIS, MTSS, school culture, it was aligned. And so you can begin to see again, those big words are the ones that were most frequently put together. What goal would you like to achieve in your building? Reading, grade, school and so on. So you can see again, it's still way too broad. For us to be narrowly focused to put together. And so we have, in the course of this interview, we have tremendous staff. And so we need to begin to focus them and the challenges. This one was what do you find most difficult in your position as a principal? Practices, getting the best practices, change, teachers. Again, what, what is the real core piece that we should be looking at? Then please assess your ability in terms of program personnel. Again, PBIS is one of the big things. The, the school achievement teachers was one of the big things to achieve. But how are we going to achieve the curriculum and so on? So looking at those pieces. What are two or three most important issues facing the system? Lack less kind of falls in line with the poor, the budget we were talking about. Learning to deal with that and having more or less. And so again, you see some pieces in there. All, all identified. What would you most like to see preserved in your building? The culture, the training, the curriculum. And so again, looking at that. So I took that then and what are the strengths and opportunities for Paige Unified? And this one was not in the original package that I gave you during the course of the interview. But as I got through dealing with it, it became even more important that the policies and administrative regulations provide a comprehensive local control over curriculum management. And the related functions to promote the district's vision and mission. And so these are some of the artifacts I looked at in relation to that. And I said, this was inadequate. We need to provide a framework for consistency to administrators and faculty and serves as a common reference for decision-making. And design and delivery of the written, taught and tested curriculum. That stops us from going out and saying, oh, I'm a new fifth grade teacher. You know, I really liked the bluebird program we had at South Mountain and I want to bring it to page and would you please buy this for me and let's put it in place? And I know one board member specifically I talked about, we, that's constant search for that panacea, for that silver bullet, I call it. And there's no silver bullet. It's just hard work. It's focused. It's moving together. So this, this also will, is a budgetary constraint because it gives us an opportunity to focus our budget. When this is not here, the content and quality of educational decisions are left to the discretion of individuals. And outcomes may not be reflected at the board's intent. So when we begin to look at, if we're looking at specific pieces of information. We're finding out that that's not lined up sometimes with the board's intent. And I'll show you that in just a minute. So one of the things is you already had in place beyond textbooks. You, you adopted that program in twenty fourteen, fifteen. You've been paying for that program since then. However, it's not been fully implemented. So instead of creating something new, let's fully implement this program. We know it works. It works in a hundred and twenty different school districts and so it will work for us. And then we developed the KPIs to monitor the implementation of programs. So I wrote some rhetorical questions that we would need to answer. About the taught and tested curriculum and how to move that forward. Then review evidence-based enrichment activities. Well, a key component. The beyond textbook curriculum framework, which will want to become the page curriculum framework is reteach and enrich. So if I give a CFA, Common Formative Assessment on Friday, let's say as an example. And my students, twenty percent of my students passed it, eighty percent did not. Eighty percent is going to reteach, twenty percent should be going to enrich. And so that begins to, to say that we're not going to allow you to miss standards. So where is that driven from? That's from board policy. So there's no, there's, we don't have any administrative regulations that say this. And that's why, why we're putting together the BT non-negotiables. So the board outlines teaching methods and lesson planning. And regulations requiring the development and submission of lesson plans that should be based on the model that we're putting together. Again, beyond textbooks, conduct the continuous database curriculum review. We should have a plan in place that every two years to three years, we are reevaluating that curriculum. And I'm talking about the written curriculum. I'm talking about the resources that support the curriculum, which is the textbooks. Textbooks are not curriculum. Textbooks are resources. And then I'm talking about the instruction that turns those curriculum and textbooks into activities in the classroom. And so we want to guarantee equal access to that curriculum. And these are the policies that govern that and look at an annual assessment, equity data. What's the difference between equity and equality? Well, equality says everybody has a pair of shoes. Equity says everybody has a pair of shoes that fit. That's the difference between equity and equality. Equity, everybody gets a pair of shoes. Equality, everybody has a pair of shoes that fits. That's the important piece. The, are we fitting and moving forward with, with our standards? Does the organizational chart that is annually reviewed and proved by the superintendent present the board? Again, that's a policy. I'm working on that as we speak. I'm sorry, that's not one of my, I should have put that up as one of my goals. Because right now it's occupying time because of this right here. That's the board's human capital investment. Are you getting a return on your investment? That's what we're looking at. And, and being strategically deployed to accomplish the educational mission and can monitor and maintain the structure toward that end. Job descriptions, which is a whole interesting scenario I won't go into right now, is the substance and provide the basis for those positions. And it's about span and control, chain of command, logical grouping of functions. Scalar responsibilities. So again, there's policies that govern all this and the super, and it signs those responsibilities to me. And I'm very excited to accept that challenge. Look at those administrative roles and these are notes I put in here because I guess in twenty seventeen, eighteen. The district had a, two people come in, Pete Hall and Alisa Simmerall. And work on reflective practices. But right now that, you know, where is it? What happened to it? Where did it go in relation to the curriculum? A formal policy for organized weekly PD and that's our Fridays. We're putting together organizational meetings, but we also need to capitalize on those Fridays. Remember that that half-day Friday may or may not be the best way to do that Friday. In that, you know, I've, I've worked in where I was principal and we did Wednesdays. Rather than Fridays, but I know the next year they went to Fridays. So we've got to think about Fridays and the dynamics of your community, the dynamics of, of things that draw teachers minds away. Are they you know, being a page, I would say, okay, I'm sitting in professional development, but I know my boat's getting ready. So I can go out and have some fun this weekend, which is, that's okay. That's our lifestyle. So Friday may not be the right time to do this, but right now that's where it is. And do an instructional audit. Focus on teachers' use of effective research-based instructional strategies. So for example, governing board policy I H A reads. The instructional program shall reflect the importance of language acquisition. So what is our language acquisition program and reading skill development? And you know, we're using a a benchmark program called STAR. STAR is not exactly designed to do what we're using it for. So we need to look at that. And what's the second priority in our, that should be governing our programs? That's the fundamentals of mathematics, beginning in kindergarten. It's clearly defined in board policy. But now we need to translate that into actions through administrative support, administrative training, professional development and all those, so that those curricular priorities drive everything. And then we have these other board policies. Anything in I, as you know, is instruction. So there's other policies that come together and we need to move forward with that. And create a data system with clearly defined types and levels of support. So N W A is the benchmarking system for six through twelve. Why isn't it K through twelve? And looking at the common formative assessments, CFAs. Developing assessment calendar, which is in progress right now. Shannon is leading that charge to get that assessment calendar put in place. So that we can have, we all know when these things are going to happen and what that's going to look like. And of course, this is all being put together, given that we're normal. And we're not normal because of the COVID nineteen. So again, trying to establish as much solidity as we can to that. Identify high expectations for all students, which include academic and not, non-academic factors. We have these two programs. I say they are in conflict. They may not be. I have not gotten into it in great detail and worked with everybody. I know that Avid now is supposed to be district-wide. PBIS is also a well, well-recognized program. So we need to make sure we line those approaches up so that we are clearly focused on students. And it's clearly focused on that high expectations. Family engagement, what's that look like? And it's more than just a parent teacher conference. It's more than just, you know, the show and tell. We want to look at how we engage families. For example, in the charter school I worked in, in the, in Flagstaff, we had a whole parent group that was involved with family engagement. And so when we needed volunteers at the school to work with something, I would go to that parent group. The, the, the follow volunteers and say, we need five people to come in and help with this campus cleaning or with this show that we're having. That would go out through a website that parents had registered for and they would volunteer and come in and work as an example. Another school I worked at. And I, I tell you, I used to fight against it. But every Tuesday night, we had a family action team meeting. And parents would come in and we would do rotating assignments in which we a team from like the high school where I was principal, we'd go down and cook dinner for those parents. And this was through a grant from Indian Health Service. So we would cook dinner. And we got some interesting dinners, by the way. Nobody got, everybody, and everybody was well, but it was very interesting. But again, it was about family engagement. We would have about a hundred people show up. Well, we had fifteen hundred people in our district. Is that enough? That was enough because it was not always the same people, but it was always committed to being, building that engagement. Another piece of that engagement is, and I don't have on here, is Power Schools. I've already tasked the Indian Education Committee and their director. We want you out there getting every parent working with Power Schools app. So that they can stay in constant communication with the teacher. And there's a lot of triggers in Power School app that would make that work. Review our technology plan and look at improvement. Google platform is our platform now. Look at a continuous learning action plan. And then look at the schools plan. How does that translate down? Not only is Google platform, which is called Google Classroom, a piece, but in our program at Flagstaff Arts and Leadership Academy as an example, every teacher and every student had their website. And so every student would post on their website their successes. So by the time they were a senior, after going through four years of high school, they had a full portfolio of plays. Of readings, of writings, of testing, of accomplishments that they had available to them when they started applying for post-secondary education. Then the last one is look at our communication plan, including the recommendations for improvement. We're constantly working on that. Our website is under revision right now. It should be close to becoming a reality. And this was set up some time ago and Stephen Law, our public relations person is on it and moving forward with that. And expanding our communication. I keep reminding, I don't know how many of you saw the basically sixteen-page insert in the Navo Times last week. I was very proud of that, very proud of it going out and showing the accomplishments of students. And it also shows that we have some work to do in relation to that. So that again is part of the avid program. So that again is part of the avid program and moving forward with that. So taking all this together and building on everything that we have. So that we come back to. A planning process that. Causes our district. To number one, become a, a B school or a A school. But that we are here. We're moving in a solid direction and expecting solid results. Can you imagine what it would be like if everybody focused on reading and math? Uh, every classroom, even if you're a science teacher, even if you're a welding teacher. You have reading in that program and you're working with those standards in that program. So that we're all focused on hitting that reading and math and moving it forward. And, and making that happen. So it's getting these pieces together. Because we're already here, we already have plans, things in place. And saying this is working, this is not working. This is costing too much for the gains we're getting or not getting. This is here and so on. So with that, that's what I present to you, the challenge. Um, which I guess is really what you're going to require me to do is moving forward with that strategic executive summary. And moving forward with. Those. These pieces here and putting that in place. Thank you. Questions? Don't overwhelm me, please, one at a time.
All right, floor, floor is open, board members. Any, any comments or questions from the board members? Are we good?
I just want to say thank you Larry for this packet and explaining everything pretty much in depth. I think it is definitely a great platform and moving forward and so forth. Thank you for the insight.
Go ahead, unmute. Uh, do you unmute?
Okay.
There, perfect.
I was gonna say I've been thoroughly impressed. Read the whole document and I couldn't wait to see the outcome. And now that I do see and we are in the right direction with you. Thank you for your insight, your hard work, the extra research that you've done. To move to an A school. Thank you.
Uh, anybody else? Well, I'll, I'll just say this, I know that, um, Larry, you and I had met. Right off the bat, we had a lot of conversation around. Uh, how, you know, how, what, what can we do to, to reach the, the, really the goals that we have? And that is student achievement, how can we move the needle? And that was really the, the conversation. And we settled in on a couple of things and that was. A systems and a process, and I call them audits, uh, that's just what I'm familiar with. Uh, but this provides us with an awful lot to chew on for sure. Uh, but we've got to take it from the paper and as, 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 as a board member. And how you have come to us and, and, uh, really dealt straight out and said, hey, this, we're, we're, we, you've got to do some different things. And we have to get our policies aligned. So that we fall in line with the direction that we want to go. Uh, in terms of an organization, in terms of a school. And, uh, so, uh, I want to really take this to heart. And I want you to continue to challenge us as board members. And as a board to work together towards this. Uh, we really do need work, work, make sure our policies are in line. Uh, with the objectives, uh, with the goals that'll support, uh, administration. Uh, the principles and what they want to do. Uh, I know we were approached with this before. Uh, by one of the principals and said, we need some policy changes where we, we want to do that. We want to be, we want to listen. And then as far as organization of our, uh, our work-study sessions. Uh, this has been a real benefit for us, but I know that just from your input. We've got to get a lot more focused in terms of the student achievement pieces and what is it we need to have conversation over? So anyway, I, I do thank you for that, that piece, uh, and, and, uh. And the input that you had on the board and, and what we're, we're doing. And, and like, like we've talked about before. We've got an awful lot of really good people, we're doing a lot of work and a lot of good work. But, uh, now we've got to get to that point where, as you said, the gap analysis, we've got to close those gaps. And it certainly is, uh, it certainly is, uh, a challenge, uh, no doubt. But, uh, again, I do, I do add my appreciation on that and then take that up as a challenge for, for the board for sure.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And the critical piece is this has to become a living document. This page right here, these goals, we've got to get them in front of you a lot of times so we can all talk about them. We can all come to a shared understanding and move forward. And that's why I ask, um, Shannon, our curriculum director, to talk a little bit about the BT implementation. Because I want you to be aware of it so that when you get questions, you can say, go back to your BT implementation framework and that tells you what to do. So this can't be just a one-shot presentation that, that's presented goes away. It's got to be a living document that's, that's, that permeates through our work-study sessions and the board's actions. Thank you.
Exactly. And, uh, this all goes to, I've constantly had conversation with, uh, with, with our leadership. Uh, in terms of who are we as, as Paige Unified School District? And when we lay these kind of things, we've had this kind of stuff laid out in front of us, we really do have to take it. And we have to, uh, really, really focus in hard on, uh, on the core. And, uh, just let's get that identity. Uh, we're here about students. That's our biggest goal, that's what drives us, that's what drives our policies, that's what drives why we come to school. And so, and it's every student from every location. So I appreciate that. Board, one last opportunity, you have anything you'd like to, to say? I'm sorry, it was Sondra? Ditto? Oh, wow, that's a famous line out of a movie, I remember that. Yeah, that's nice, ditto. All right, thank you, Sandra. All right, well, listen, uh, not having any further, uh, comments. Let's go ahead and go on to item C. That's BT implementation, non-negotiables. Uh, Ms. Garrison, you're on the line.
Good evening, give me just one moment, I will share my screen. Good evening, Board President Candelaria, Superintendent Wallen, members of the board and our great community of Paige. I am Shannon Garrison and I am the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for our district. This evening I will be sharing information about the district expectations for Beyond Textbooks implementation. Um, Beyond Textbooks, as Larry was talking about earlier, is a curricular framework and resources. To support ensuring implementation of the Arizona State Standards. BT focuses on the what and the when. What do our students need to know and be able to do? And when do they need to learn it? The how, as Larry talked about earlier too, is instruction. And the magic that our classroom teachers bring as they ensure that all students are making progress. Towards mastery of the state standards. This plan began with our principal team reviewing where we had been with BT and where we are currently with BT. The team looked at examples from other districts as we thought about expectations and setting forth those expectations for, for our district. And we were able to develop the PUSD expectations for the, the BT implementation. We believe that this is the shortest way towards moving a district and moving towards becoming an, an A school district. Our implementation plan is scaffolded. And as you can see, we start with quarter one. Really with teachers begin to use the Beyond Textbooks Wiki to access and use curriculum calendars. Essential standards and the unwrapped documents to guide lesson planning and instruction for the subject being implemented. You'll see here in just a moment, we'll start first with reading and math K through 12 and some other subjects that we'll do with a scaffolded implementation. We also have a note here about district-approved curriculum maps. Uh, teams that have followed the BT calendar customization process for the district. Will be able to see their updated information reflected in the BT calendar. This customization process was reviewed with our principals and as we look further at that, we'll communicate that out to all staff. So that everybody has that same understanding. Teachers will use the unwrapped standards to plan their lessons. Our teachers are going to use the key vocabulary for the essential standards of instruction. All of this information is in with, within BT and our teachers will use that to drive their lesson planning from Beyond Textbooks. Learning intentions, these really are student-friendly objectives. They will be posted and communicated to our students. We'll start first with just ensuring that we're posting the learning intentions, the agenda, the essential questions. And including also success criteria so that our students understand what it means to be successful. Or what it looks like to be successful with meeting those, those learning intentions and ultimately the state standards. Our teachers, um, we're talking about the, the common formative assessments. The assessments are a part of the BT framework. And our teachers will record their data from the weekly assessments in a data collection form. It will be incredibly important that we're monitoring the implementation, looking at the data. And using the data from those common formative assessments to make instructional decisions and ultimately drive our instruction in our classroom. That's really what that next, next bullet point says, that data will be reviewed to drive instruction. That's how we should be using data is to inform our instruction. Um, all grades will fully implement reading and math. We talked briefly about that, that's where we, where we start. Including administering the formative assessments for math K through 12. Um, we have within our district kindergarten assessments, that's not something that is a part of the BT framework, but our kindergarten teachers have developed those. BT offers the common formative assessments first through, through 12th grade. So we'll continue to analyze and look at those and ensure that those are the, the correct assessments to be using for our work. Within BT, there are daily math skills that are available K through eight. We'll start in the first quarter with piloting these. Our teams will meet monthly through grade level data meetings. Uh, this could be in a PLC or, or data room within our schools. And they'll meet with our principals and our specialists. And really the purpose of those meetings is to evaluate our student progress towards mastery of the state standards. Celebrate our successes with the implementation, discuss any challenges. Plan for reteach and enrich. And, um, we're using that data, reviewing that student data to plan for those reteach and enrich opportunities. Fourth and fifth grade will fully implement writing at the beginning of the year. Fourth grade will implement science at the beginning of the year. This year we have new science standards K through 12. And so we'll be seeking some support with making that transition still with some curriculum work for our science teachers. To have some time to use with the Beyond Textbooks framework to plan for that. Uh, so we'll start first with, with fourth grade, which is a, uh, subject area, science at fourth grade and eighth grade and also our high school. Those are the tested grade levels for science. Uh, our teachers meet in weekly PLCs and discuss the successes and challenges. Um, we talked about that particular piece that's really going to be in the PLC conversations. Um, our site leadership team, including our student achievement teachers. Student achievement teachers really are integral to the BT process. And they will help support our site leaders in, um, those conversations around observations. And providing feedback directly to our teachers to support them as we move forward. Uh, the focus, of course, will be on the support with using the curriculum calendar and using the BT framework. Our administrators will monitor our teachers on the use of the BT Wiki. And the use of curriculum calendars, essential standards. And the unwrapped documents to guide lesson planning and instruction for the subject being implemented. Um, of course, admin as well as our SATs, coaches. We will provide support and feedback to, to our teachers. And those administrators are going to be building principles as well as district administration as well. Moving into second quarter, there are some additional items here, but to note that we, this is in addition to the items above. Um, so we continue to use BT, all of those components to plan our lessons for the subject areas being implemented. Um, in second quarter, we'll begin to implement science, um, at every grade level. That's not to say that our, our high school teachers, our secondary science teachers, they're starting day one with implementing science. I'm speaking more here towards our K through eight. That may be a delayed implementation to provide more support for implementing the new standards in that subject area. Our teachers post the learning intentions, which is really student-friendly objectives. And not only are they posting them, but the important thing is that they're communicating them. And so the additional piece hit here is communicating those learning intentions verbally to our students. Really, our students should know from the start of the lesson, what, what we're learning today and why we're learning it. And as I, as a teacher, should be, uh, ensuring that I'm communicating the lesson, um, learning intention or lesson objective. Throughout the lesson and coming back to it in the closure of the lesson to support ensuring that we've, we've met those, um, learning intentions and goals for the day. Um, if not already in place, we'll ensure that by second quarter that K through 12 is implementing the writing curriculum. Um, our staff, of course, will continue to discuss the progresses. The progress, excuse me, challenges, celebrations and set, set new goals. As Superintendent Wallen was talking about with the KPIs, the key performance indicators. As we meet those goals, we will set, set new goals and there will be specific KPIs around BT. In the third quarter, um, we'll continue to monitor. And really our administrators will be focused on monitoring our teachers to ensure that they're posting the, the. Objectives and learning intentions and also communicating those. Um, K through eight is going, in the first quarter, they were piloting those daily math skills. We'll continue to use the daily math skills as we move into the third quarter. In the fourth quarter, if it's not already in place, um, from our implementation. Our teachers will begin to use the model products and performance tasks. From the unwrapped standards to demonstrate what mastery looks like and to assess student learning. These are documents that are a part of the BT curricular framework. And so just intentionally putting that focus on using those pieces. We'll continue to monitor our teachers on the use of the formative assessments to drive our instruction. And then, you know, in the fourth quarter, you're winding down, we're going to look at, you know. Overall, from the year, what were the, what was the progress that we made? Or the challenges we encountered? What can we celebrate? And, you know, talk whether or not we met our goals for the year. And if we didn't meet them, what are we going to do to adjust those goals and work to meet them the following year? Or, uh, if we did meet them, setting new goals for the next year. Each grade level is, we'll be able to share ideas in this reflection. And really think about the implementation and how that went for the year. Um, if changes are needed to the calendar, let's say our, uh, a specific grade level team wants to make an adjustment where they want to. Change the order of when a standard is occurring. We can look at the BT calendar customization process. Uh, and making those proposed changes. That process involves us. Going through our district process to submit the calendar changes. And then we submit those from the district level to our BT representative. So, um. You can see here, our, like I said, our, our plan is, is scaffolded and, um, it is. A, a plan for, for implementation. We recognize that there are certain grade levels and subject areas, that areas that may be further along. That this really is the, um, the minimum expectations for, for the implementation. And what we'll look at now is how we, you know, ensuring with communication, we get this information to you as our school board. Because we ask for your support as we move forward with implementation and working to raise student achievement. And our, our building principals have been presented this information. We'll look at next steps to roll this communication out to our district. communication out to our district and of course, plan for the support pieces that come along with this implementation plan. What questions can I answer regarding the beyond textbooks implementation plan that was reviewed this evening?
Board members.
Andrea, you need to unmute yourself.
Did board member have something to say? Sandra?
Here we go, sorry. I forgot I had muted myself. So, um, my question is, how much of that information is going to be um communicated to our parents?
Regarding the the BT implementation.
Because we keep talking about, you know, we gotta involve our community, we gotta involve our parents. Um, a lot of times when we um either start a new, I mean, I know this is not new. We've done some of this before. But um, it, I think it would be really helpful to have our parents realize what's going to happen at school. So, I'm wondering how much of this is going to be communicated to our parents, like how does that affect their student in the classroom setting or whatever setting we might have? And what are our expectations of helping, having our parents help with this? You know, for example, there's a lot of times that um people take their kids out of school on Fridays and make it their own personal three day weekend, whatever. But what if the the assessments are all on Fridays? Then we run into a problem, just as an example. So, I was just wondering how much of that, what or what are the plans to communicate to our parents that they understand what we're doing?
Thank you very much for that question, Sandra. I appreciate that. I I believe that communication is so incredibly important and I think that that would be a great next step for us to look at the information that we want communicated out to our our families to support this implementation piece as well.
So there's no plan so far? That's you saying that might be the next step?
Superintendent.
Did I understand that correctly?
I think you understood that correctly based on what we know. Um, like like Shannon said, there's uh great, you know, teachers who are farther along than others in this process, but you've raised a very good point about uh where I talked about in my strategic plant, strategic plan that uh family engagement. And it's not just that we go on a three day weekend on Friday. But remember that these are calendars. So we're saying this standard has this much time to be taught. In order for us to get through all the standards and guarantee mastery by April when we go into the uh, you know, the assessments. And so that's a new training. That's a new training for parents. Wait a minute, you mean learning goes on when I'm not there? Uh, my students are not there? Yes, it does. And so not only do you have to get that instilled in the curriculum, get that instilled in the parents, but you have to get them to understand that, okay, now we've taught this. You missed it on Friday. How are you going to make it up? We've given you our best shot. Now it's your turn to step up. And so the best thing to do is to be in school and to be in class. And, you know, I know things come up as we all know, but uh, you know, the that to me raises the value of the decision to be absent. Now, all of a sudden, it has a direct impact on what's happening in the classroom. A direct impact on that student's performance, a direct impact on that student's grades and a direct impact on the next grade level. So you're right, that is a big, a big public relations campaign that needs to go around the fact that this is a calendar. It is essential standards and these are all the pieces to go with it. But most importantly, that calendar means we're moving on. If you're gone Friday, you know, I, that's your decision. However, we are moving on with those learning intentions, with those student friendly objectives. And so now, we've taught it. Do, are we guaranteed to have to go back and make it up because you, you know, that parent made a choice not to be there? And my responsibility, no, we don't. We're because we're publishing to the parents all the time. These are where the standards are in the calendar. This is what we're on this week. There's all kinds of outreach that's supposed to go with that. So we need to, again, make that decision to miss school much more impactful than it has been in the past. And that's where I talk about learning, uh, students learning with effort. Uh, that effort is now a shared responsibility between the parents and the student and the teacher.
Another important piece here too is to think about the target audience for this particular communication. In this particular communication, we're talking about the expectations for the beyond textbook implementation, which really our target audience is our teachers and staff, administrators, principals across the district. And so at, when I think about communication and next steps with this, I think that what Sandra raises are some very important um notes eh that we should get more communication out about curriculum and about our beyond textbook framework. We wouldn't necessarily publish this particular document though, just because these are the expectations for um our teachers and administrators. And so I think sharing, sharing information in the future and more communication about curriculum and highlighting that for our district um to share with with all stakeholders in the community and our families as well.
You know, Shannon, uh, what you say is really, really important and that's exactly what went through my head. How would I want to see this as a parent? Uh, and 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 that way it holds the students accountable too. Because it's it's something that, I mean, we had beyond textbooks, but this is going to be K through twelve. The expectations are going to be out there, the students are going to know it. And then to put this in T in parent, parent talk. And say, this is what your students are going to be going through. And what does a curriculum map mean? And uh, if you miss a day here, it's critical and you have to come back and make sure you're responsible to to pick up what the lessons you've lost if you don't make it to school. So, I mean, parent talk. And I think that's, that would, that would be nice to get a document out that way or even a little video on the website about BT, what what's happening, you know what I mean?
I think um Bob and Sandra, those are excellent suggestions. Thank you for raising those this evening.
I have, um, just kind of going reflecting back to what Sandra had mentioned. Um, also going back to the entry plan that um was shared. So beyond textbook was intro adopted in two thousand fourteen through two thousand fifteen school year. And I remember being a part of the psych council at that time. And a lot of the communication with beyond textbook was done there. But I think that also just what was communicated that it needs to be brought to the attentions of our community out on under reservation to chapter. My, I don't think it, chapter meetings are officially the place, but more importantly out under reservation to our families to educate them and under, you know, the implementing what BT is all about and so forth. Not BT, but the plan. Yes.
Good. Any other comments, board members? Okay, I don't hear anything else. And uh Shannon, thank you so much. Uh, that sounds like a really, really good uh approach as we start and the sustainability of something, you always got to keep it out front. And it looks like these steps do do that. And uh, it it, what this is going to provide is alignment K through twelve. So that's what I'm excited about. Well, thank you. Okay, we'll move on uh to the next item. Uh, item D, a review of school handbooks for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Uh, Larry Wallen, you've got that.
Okay, um, Mr. President, members of board, we have attachments for the handbooks and we have two principals who will give three minutes to each principal uh to briefly talk about. We still need to go back and revise these handbooks. I'm not sure if we have all the eh, all the pieces in there we need for the COVID nineteen changes that we're making. And but uh, board policy says that the board receives copies. It doesn't say you have to approve them. And in my experiences, I've always advised boards, do not approve handbooks. Because then they become an extension of your uh policy, they become an extension of your contract. And so it's better to have them as advisory documents uh in that understanding. But I would like to I guess, start with Nancy at uh her school, let uh, three minutes. If you, if I can. Unmute yourself, Nancy.
Can you hear me? Okay, good evening. Thank you. I will be brief, I promise. Um, at the time that the family handbook was submitted, we had made some very basic updates to names and dates. Um, at this point, there will be some changes and updates that still need to be made, as superintendent Wallen um said. The calendar that was recently um changed and updated by the school board needs to be updated, of course, as well as some of the procedures that are within the handbook, once the decisions are made about uh returning to school.
And then Ms. Covington?
Good evening, governing board president, governing board members. Um, the, you will see that there are a lot of of highlights within our handbook. Um, I do want to thank a few people first for their work on our student handbook. So Lisa Horstley, um Teresa Robbins, um Mike Barnes and myself all worked together to make the changes that are inside our handbook. Most of the changes that you will see um have to do with on the front cover of the change of of personal staff. Um, but also we are refining, we had some of our um staff members attend some restorative practices, training this year in addition to um refresh a training on PBIS. And so you will see reflected in our handbook, some of the uh changes in our disciplinary procedures that align to uh restore the practices, building in our tier one, two and three as a um in response to doing those interventions first with through the PBIS model of reteaching and redirecting. Um, in addition to initially teaching the students the expectations. You will also see that we have added a um, a section on community service and requiring our students to have twelve hours of community service. And that is really to build that bridge back between um school and home and community. The students can um earn their community service right there at home. Um, and we have different examples um of, and it just helps them and our parents to really have that understanding or walk away with what pride looks like all the way around and changing our um focus on character development in order to change the expectations on campus. Um, there is also included with that uh citizenship grade that we have outlined in there. Um, I know that in the review, Mr. Wallen um did uh make some comments about our um matrix or that we share or use district wise with all the secondary schools. And so I'm sure more will be um talked about regarding that. In addition to the same things as Ms. Warner has mentioned and Mr. Wallen have mentioned about the uh COVID expectations being added to our handbook. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Covington and Ms. Warner. Uh, Mr. Wallen.
Yes, sir.
I know in your initial comments that uh your suggestion uh would actually go to make an adjustment for the board in terms of how we consider uh handbooks. And so we'd really appreciate that input and uh, I think we need to take that to heart. Uh, that's just my opinion. Other board members.
Um, we have always had a, well, not always, but in recent years, we've put a disclaimer in the handbook saying that even though it's board approved, in case there's a conflict, it always refers to what's in board policy. And that board policy overrides the handbook. We did have that in there before.
And so what I would suggest, once we make the the changes, we bring them back uh for final approval. Because we still, like I said, we still got changes to make. And we can find, I didn't, I'm not familiar with that disclaimer, but that is one way to tackle that issue.
Yeah, it was in there last year, so I don't know what happened to it.
Okay, thank you.
If we have had this discussion before, and I remember putting this disclaimer in.
So that would be an adequate way to deal with it, because I do remember our discussions pre- previously.
Yeah, that could be.
Yeah.
Um, good, good recommendation.
Board members, any other comments?
Well, I have one question still, sorry.
Yes.
And how, how, how is the middle school gonna keep track of all these service hours? I'm thinking twelve service hours times six hundred kids. That seems like an enormous um administrative task.
Actually have um sheet that will be sent and they can even be signed if the student does some things at school. So some of those hours can be signed, so they're actually community service lit. And then our students, uh, excuse me, our staff are very well versed in the um Excel spreadsheets. And for our grade levels, being able to to have that. And then at the end of the year, really certificating the students for their community service as a means to build community well on the campus.
Are you gonna include that in power schools?
Um, no, there was not a discussion about including that in power school. Um, if you would like, I would definitely welcome a conversation about further ideas that you have surrounding that.
I'm just wondering how as a parent I would keep track of that. And how I would help my students to accomplish those twelve hours, like in a practical sense.
Okay, definitely. Um, well, we can address that question with our um, with our team as far as having the record go. And then one of the things we could possibly do is to actually add um some correspondence, the same as we do with our grades within that same envelope that states during every quarter your student is here. We can definitely talk more about that and discuss more about that. And I will write that down to um provide for your solution to that.
Um, I couldn't just see from a practical, sorry, I can just see from a practical standpoint, my twelve year old going two weeks before school's out. Oh yeah, I was supposed to do twelve hours of service and then panicking. And me as a parent not even knowing what that was about. So that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, any other comments, board members? Okay, once again, thank you, Ms. Covington and Mrs. Warner. Appreciate that very much. And Mr. Wallen. Uh, let's go to next item. It's E and it has to do with the July meeting date. And Larry Wallen.
Um, you have two special meeting days during the month of July, July twenty first and twenty eight. And uh, I'm asking that we schedule, we may not need, but we need to schedule because of changes that happen daily. Uh, and so is it possible to have the board um, or just, you know, post temporarily the calendar uh meeting on the twenty first and the twenty eighth. And again, if we don't need it, that would be the the president's call. Uh, but we, is that, and Lena, is that the correct dates that we were looking at? The twenty first and twenty eighth?
Uh, yes, July twenty one and twenty eight.
And so that, uh, again, if we can post those dates, you know, have them on our calendar. So if we need them, we can ask the board president to call a meeting, you know, within the reasonable time and stuff, just in case. Because we don't know what changes are going to be coming at our, at us as we move closer and closer to the start of school.
Any uh comments, board members?
So how many meetings would that be for the month, man?
Three.
Total of three?
Three.
Okay.
Potentially three.
Okay.
And we did have that conversation. It had to be, it'd be an absolute as as needed because of changes and we have to make decisions, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, if we do need that. Any other comments, board members? So twenty one, twenty eight's okay. We can set them uh just as markers and use them if we need them.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, we come to that special time of the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
We got several motions to adjourn. We got several motions to adjourn, do I have a second?
Uh, fucking it.
Motion and second, everyone say aye. Folks, thank you very much for getting through this. Uh, Mr. Wallen, thank you for the presentations. Uh, Shannon, thank you so much. And uh, look forward to uh, what's coming next, and that's all the unknown. Thank you very much. Good night.